What's the word, Bunderberg?
Are we all here?
Sort of.
Can you hear me or not hear me?
I hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, well, seeing that we have the quorum, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we've got a quorum. I don't necessarily have a chair report. Let's get right into the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Report. Go ahead, Kitty. Kitty, can you hear me? All right, are we in agreement? That's Kitty and not me?
Kitty is muted.
Kitty, you need to unmute yourself.
There we go.
Yeah, Monty, thank you for changing your background. Your beautiful setting was very distracting to me. I was getting jealous. Thank you.
The sun just came out and it got real dark. The computer got dark.
That is a nice backdrop. I guess that's not a virtual backdrop. All right, Kitty, oops, Kitty's going to log back in. Should we wait?
I'm retired. I'm patient.
Can I do the consent agenda and ask for a motion on the minutes, or is that inappropriate?
Whatever you want.
All right, let's skip over the report and the public comment, and let's get to the consent agenda. Is everybody okay with the minutes from the last meeting?
I move we approve the minutes.
Jim's giving a motion, then Adolf seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the minutes have passed. You know, Haley, shall we go to public comment right now?
Sure, I don't have any public comment to read at this time, and I don't see any members of the public wishing to speak.
Okay, perfect. If that should change, we'll probably have discussion from the public on things we have on the agenda. So, there I see Kitty is back. Can you hear us, Kitty? We still have you on mute.
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you now.
There we go.
I had my speakers off, so I couldn't hear anything.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, FF RP, we did bring the brochure holder over to Alberto and Martine. Maybe it's out at the dog park now. Following up on that, our Wednesday weeders have been working throughout the month removing ice plant, amarillas, and a little bit of mustard and thistle. Seventeen people showed up last week to remove ice plant, which was great. The West Coast Tree Service is going to pick up the ice plant this morning and take it off site, so part of the bluff trail is blocked for a little while today. We're trying to transition, we're transitioning now from the weeders to the trail crews, so the trail crew have started their work getting the trails ready for winter rains. So they've started on the Tipton and Trenton Trails, putting in water bars and dips to guide water off the trail. Did a little bit of repair on the Trenton Trail Bridge. And Alberto supplied them with wood chips near the Monarch Grove, which would be spread out on trails in coming weeks. As you may know, the CCSD is working with Xerces Society and FF RP on developing a management plan for the Monarch Groves in the forest. So Haley and I have been working on getting some of the groundwork laid for that. Their butterfly counts in the last years have been very, very depressingly low. But maybe that's because we can improve the conditions, or at least we can have it in good shape when the monarchs return. There's been encroachment on the ranch of building, and I want to thank John and his staff for being really helpful and responsive. I think we're going to be able to resolve at least one of the issues and maybe set a good model for moving forward. Our shop has reopened to the public. So that's a big relief during all this shutdown time. I haven't worked in the office since March. Most of our calls have been whether the ranch was open, how much it costs to go, and what the charge was for camping, where are they good camp? Which demonstrated to me we're getting a lot of new visitors to the ranch. There's also persistent questions about horse rental on the ranch, which I am delighted to report is not our responsibility. We don't rent horses. We're planning for the 20th anniversary. This is the 20th anniversary of the purchase of the ranch and its designation as public open space. So we're planning an online event for November 7th, which will be a combination of history of the ranch, description of programs, but mostly musical performances. So I'll keep you posted about that. That's what I got. Steve?
Thank you. Any questions for Kitty?
I have a comment. Thanks for getting the trail maps down to the dog park.
Have you seen them, Stan? Are they there? Have you seen them?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. Excellent. Yeah, well, Alberto and Martine are doing a really good job. Yeah.
All right, saying no questions. Kitty, thank you for the report. That takes us, Haley, are we still good without anybody wanting to speak on public comment?
I still don't have anyone requesting to speak.
Perfect. And we did our consent agenda. That gets us into talking about the infrastructure grant from the county. So I was talking to Cindy the other day, just to, you know, we applied for the grant. So I'm kind of curious at this point in my mind, was that inappropriate for us to apply for the grant without asking permission from the CCSD? Because I see now the CCSD has to readjust their budget because they got incoming money and a whole bunch of stuff I don't understand. Nonetheless, we got 20 grand. We need to use it on designing the bathroom. That's where Monty's here. If anybody else wants to add to that, they're welcome to. John or Mr. Weingold, what do you got for us on that?
Yeah, Steve, you're fine with the grant application. We took care of all that administrative stuff. You guys should not have to deal with any administrative. That's our job. So you just have to give guidance on those sort of things. The budget adjustment is simply another administrative issue that, you know, whenever we change what the board has approved, whether that's new money being added or changes to what they've authorized, we have to go back to the board and have them bless that change. So that's all that is. I was gonna, I'll just add, since, you know, I'm on a subject, so Thursday's board meeting, we'll be talking about your recommendations for prioritization and projects. And so wrapped into one agenda item is the budget adjustment, the direction to staff to proceed with the restroom design, utilizing that grant. And the third is discussion on the projects themselves that you've all have recommended and put together. So Steve, for sure, you should be there at that meeting to answer questions and present that. That item, I'll open it up and present it. We can talk more offline if you wish. And as many board members as wish to be present to discuss and be part of the public comment, I'm sure the board would welcome you all there. This is a pretty important discussion item because it really talks to a bit of the future of parks and rec functions for the community. And there's a lot of really interesting projects there. The question is how to think about them, how to prioritize them, how to phase them if we want to do them all. So it should be a really robust discussion. You've all done some really good work there. And so I'd encourage you all to be there if you can on Thursday afternoon to participate in the discussions.
Okay, thank you, John. Another question, kind of on the same topic. Does this contract with Monty have to go out to bid, or how did that turn out?
We'll be handling that. I honestly need to check on how exactly this particular bid process to go. There are all kinds of restrict, not necessarily restrictions as much as parameters we have to work through within our purchasing policy. And so I pretty much don't do anything around here before I check with District Council.
Yeah, so, and I'm just throwing this out there. It seemed to me in my memory, which is only about 80%, that on the last project where we did the grading and the laying and the, that I don't think we put out the consulting fee to Monty to bid. We just, because it wasn't enough money, but we did have to put out the project itself to bid, so.
Yeah, so.
That's my recollection.
Yeah, for professional services, we don't have to do that. We don't have to get three bids, but for other services, we do. So I just have to check to make sure that design services are part of that or not. But we've got the team here behind you for that. So we'll handle that. And if there are some preferred design companies that you like, I'm open to hearing from them. We'll go out and seek a bid from them. For sure.
Okay.
And by the way, there, you know, for that meeting on Thursday, back in 2009, the board had approved the, an update to the plan for the East Ranch there for Parks and Rec. And so that's all on our website from that meeting. But if, Steve, I can send that link to you. But it'd be helpful for all of you to review what that plan looks like. Essentially, all the work's been done. The community's done all this work, the EIR studies. It's ready to execute. And I think the restroom facilities is the winchpin to allow everything else to move forward. We have to do that first. We have to provide some facilities over there. So I'll have the whole staff ready and studied up on that to discuss where do we get water from, all those kind of things. But really, that's all, that's all the execution and operational stuff. You really need to work with the board to discuss, you know, what's the vision? What do we want to have? How do we want to sequence things so the staff can have some guidance on that?
Thank you. Any other questions for John here on this particular aspect of what we're discussing? Is anybody else going to be there Thursday or be on this thing Thursday? Kitty? Nah, Jim? I just feel a little overmatched on the administrative end of where we're at with whatever we're doing, right? Not to take a cliche, but I feel like I'm the cheerleader. I'm not really the guy to work the nuts and bolts of what's going on. So.
You don't need to worry about, you don't have to worry about the nuts and bolts.
Well, I just, even in regards to our group and how we think and what we want to do, I want our other board members there with me to make sure that I don't misspeak or give some kind of impression that may not be so. Because now, because now we're spending money. It's one thing to do things when we're not spending money, but when we start spending the money, I just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly. And I don't want to be the only guy signing that check. Thank you.
What time would that, do you want everyone, want anyone to be there? What time should any other board members be there if you want to come?
Well.
Go ahead, Steve.
It starts at 2:00. I'm not sure where it sets on the agenda.
Yeah, it's the first item on the agenda, but the board, of course, always has the authority to move things around. But right now, it's the first item. And there's really not a lot of other items. There's no, I don't think there's any consent items on there. I actually got it right here. Your Pro's Commission report is basically the first item. And after public comment, this is the first item. So it'll be, it'll be pretty, pretty, pretty much near the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, because I won't have much of a report because we're going to be discussing everything when I get there.
Right.
Okay, so now, let's get into Monty and let's let Monty go if we can. So where are we at with him? Are we, we're hiring him? We're authorizing him to start? Jim, what do you think?
I think it's up to District Council, but I believe if it's a consulting agreement, I think we should be able to start with him after District Council has checked on whether we need to put it to bid. But I, and we've worked with him before. And even if he bid it, he would win. You know, it's a little job. And, you know, he's going to do a good job. That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I'm ready to go. Does anybody have any other comments on that?
No, I don't think I, I read it pretty quick. Where does Monty report to our board for input or does he? Do we put all our input through Carlos?
Joyce?
Steve, I'm having trouble hearing Kermit. I don't know why.
It could be my microphone. It still hasn't straightened up for my last go around.
It gets better as you get closer.
Okay. But anyway, my question is about when do we have input in, when does the board, our board have input into the process? Does Monty come weekly or monthly and talk to us? Do we go through Carlos? How do we keep track of this in our perspective of input?
John, do you have a comment on that?
Yep. My recommendation is you tell me how often you want updates, and I'll make it so.
I guess the biggest issue is we talked about the issue of selection of the plan, you know, whether it was commercial or do we take one of the old plans and update it? And then the question, they have the authority to, they're going to work on all the administrative parts and they were going to have other inputs from architects and so forth. But the last time when I was, my computer didn't work and I couldn't contact, but we had, we were going to basically give inputs on that old plan. The old plan has, you know, roof lines, the content of the, you know, how the finishes and so forth to make it a longer lasting or better smelling place than it is, better lighting and so forth. That's where basically the basic concern was. We didn't want to build another 1950 toilet at a tremendous cost, rather build a expensive toilet at cheap cost. So that's, that's the question is how do we interact with this?
Carlos? So, you know, typically what happens is on a situation like this at the board level is the board will appoint an ad hoc of two members to act as the point people for the board, or in your case, the commission. And then they can communicate to the rest of the board. And we can decide when and how to bring back updates to designs, et cetera, and parameters. That's just one suggestion. It just makes things a little more easy to work rather than because otherwise, we have to have a full board meeting every time we talk to the entire commission. We've had a public meeting for that. So an ad hoc makes things a little easier for the day-to-day working with the consultant.
Jim?
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing from Monty, actually, on what his vision is of what he's going to do. And I think that Stan's more interested in, you know, the surfaces. And I think Monty is more interested in connecting civil design stuff, permitting, et cetera. So maybe we could just get a lead from Monty and help it that way. And from John's perspective, I think that if there's an ad hoc, there's so many board ad hocks, maybe the board can can have two of the Pro's Commissioners be the ad hoc and just report, you know, rather than having Haley.
That's what I thought John's implication was, that the ad hoc would be two of us and Monty.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't know.
That is, and that's something, Steve, that you should discuss with the board on Thursday.
Okay.
I would suggest that you nominally name two members today. And Steve, you have the authority to do that. And then at least the system set up to move forward, pending board direction.
All right, Monty, we've talked enough about you. It's your turn.
Okay, so my background on this, well, obviously, as you guys all know, we designed the Phase 1 of the Fiscalini Ranch project, all the infrastructure. And then I believe it was last summer, is the last time I came to your meeting, and we discussed the bathroom project. I was asked to provide that proposal, which I did. And then obviously, it's been a year, so.
Wouldn't you know it?
I'm choices for this bathroom project. And I could take that and run with it. And obviously, you know, working with you guys along the way.
Monty, you dropped off for about 30 seconds. We, if you could back up and talk about, you know, what happened a year ago.
Sorry about that. So a year ago, CCSD requested, or Pro's requested that I provide a proposal for this, these services. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. But as I said, it's been a year. Nothing has been done yet. I'm waiting for the signed contract, but one.
Zoom.
Yeah.
All right, I make a.
Monty, we lost you after, we lost you after the signed contract.
I'm really sorry. So signed contracts, and then you guys were going to provide the design choices like the finishes on the building, you know, potentially, you know, some of the architectural details. I am not an architect. I am just a civil engineer. I am definitely able to look into some pre-manufactured building concepts for you guys and present some options. And that was one of the paths that we had talked about. And I believe that was the intent of this, this contract, which was just, you know, it was research, it was presenting options and figuring out a path to go forward to complete this project.
That's the way I remember it. Is everybody in agreement? Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if that also included working with the county on the permitting and and design submission for the civil, you know, for grading and connecting.
Right, so this was not a fixed fee contract. This is a time and material not to exceed 20,000 for the research and potentially design of this project. I guess it just depends on how far in depth we go with the research and design of this project. It can include that. I guess the difficulty would be I don't have an answer because I haven't gotten into it yet. It's just, it's not to exceed 20,000.
And Steve, Carlos has his hand raised to maybe add some information to this.
There we go. I don't see that. Go ahead.
Haley, can you bring Carlos in? Haley, can you bring Carlos into the meeting? Let me text Haley here.
Joyce, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd always thought that they were going to be responsible for the permitting, and that was part of the 20,000, but I guess that was not correct.
I'm not necessarily saying that it's not included. I think what I am saying is I was requested to present a proposal for the 20,000 time and material to research, present options, and get this rolling for you guys. If it's a quick process initially, and we can all decide on a path, a straight path moving forward, it can include that, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we're not real sure what the permitting is going to be until he does the research. Is that correct?
I think the permitting is fairly straightforward. I think just coming up with, I'm assuming that we want to do a pre-manufactured building and just finding what options are out there, what you guys want to see, what you want it to look like. And then, of course, there will be a requirement to show a civil site plan and accessibility details. And that's all something we can do most likely under this contract.
Joyce?
Yeah, Kermit already has done a lot of research as far as options available. Kermit, have you sent those on to Monty?
No, I've done squat.
Well, so I was kind of hoping that maybe Jim and Kermit would work as our ad hoc group to work with Monty to roll this thing forward. Jim and Kermit, are you guys okay with that?
I am.
I'd be happy to do so.
All right, so that's what I'm going to recommend to the board on Thursday. And we're still trying to get Haley and Carlos in, because John's calling a play. It's a deep pocket, right? Roll on six.
Okay, here he comes.
Carlos, go ahead. What do you got?
Hey, guys. Nice to hear from all you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of things. Nice to see you, Monty. Thanks for joining the meeting.
Good to see you, Carlos.
You had a nice background there. So just talking a little bit about Monty's proposal that I reached out to him last year about, as you see your packet there. I think it's page 25 or so-ish on your packet. As Monty mentioned, that was back in June when we asked him to provide that for us. At that point, the board had allocated $20,000 for Pro's, as they have done in the past couple of years. So I had asked Monty to provide us with an estimate up to $20,000 for a design for the restroom. That's what you see on page 26. However, when he provided the estimate, there wasn't detail yet about what that $20,000 was going to cover. That was supposed to be, you know, guidance from Pro's as to exactly what, you know, that amount was going to cover. The months went by, obviously, priorities came up, and, you know, the estimate was basically just, you know, put on the back burner. So Monty needs, first of all, needs some guidance as to what, what needs to be covered on the 20 grand. And most likely will need a. And most likely will need a updated estimate from him so that we can submit it and get a a new, new proposal and an agreement with him and Civil Design Studios. The design that you see there on your packet on page 22, I think 23, that's, that's a diagram that I provided to PROS, which is basically the floor, floor plan for one of the restrooms on Main Street, which I think is the East Village restroom. And it was sort of a design that we thought, oh yeah, you know, that works fairly well. You know, I, I guess it's a starting point since we already have those plans for a restroom and they seem to be working on both sides of town. But obviously, Kermit has done so, so much work on other designs and ideas and low flow stuff. So, so we can certainly look at that as well and see what's going to work for that area. You know, as far as a contract, John mentioned, you know, we'll look into the contract. But the reason why we didn't bet out, you know, the phase one project of design is basically we, you know, as a consultant, we have that ability to be able to sole source that and Monty had was actually working with David Foot from Furma. And they had a lot of background on the EIR, on the design. And it was an easy transition for Monty to help us with, with the first phase of that. So I would say it most, most likely, you know, that's my vote to have Monty and Civil Design Studios help us with, with the restroom design. Since they've already helped us with the foundation of that whole, whole area there. I think that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Carlos? Okay, so do we need to give Monty scope right now or do you have enough scope?
Do we have enough scope? I think one of the major things that we need to discuss is the, the EIR in the plan called for waterless restroom. And I think we have been discussing the fact that we would like to have some type of water usage in that restroom. That needs to be brought to the board for them to discuss whether they can allocate water usage to the restroom. That also needs to go to the county so that we can, you know, amend that plan as well. And I think Monty might be able to help us with that. I would suggest that we get a sort of a two-stage plan, Plan A and Plan B on the restroom and direct Monty to maybe help us with a waterless restroom and then a water use restroom so that we don't put all of our eggs in one basket. In case, you know, we're not allowed to, to utilize water, at least we have two plans available. That would be my guidance for Monty and my suggestion for, for PROS.
Yeah, I also spoke to the utilities manager this morning here at CCSD. And we're going to, his view is we're going to need water there anyway, at least for washing your hands. So we're, we've got some homework to do on that end.
Jim?
Yeah, just to, at, the EIR covered a community center there. So even though the plan mentioned waterless, and I, as I said before, I've spoken to the county and they, they strongly suggest that we have a watered facility there, not only from a cost, but from a health perspective. And at one time, there was a community center and obviously a community center was going to have a restroom with it, et cetera. So I, I, I'm, I'm thinking we should go to the county first and see where they're coming from. And rather than jump through two, you know, two plans, it's, you know. Anyway, that's my, my input.
Yeah, and just in the guise that I want this meeting to get over and not keep talking, but I can't believe we're going to have the discussion about the water versus the non-water that we've been talking about forever. So if somebody wants to say, I don't want water for my bathroom at the park, they need to stand up and say, I don't want water at the park because Monty's got to get us that answer from the guy whoever's going to give us that answer. That's the way I feel because I'm a little confused myself.
You know, the, the biggest issue is you almost can't design the building if you decide if you're going to have a regular flush or a vault or some odd system. And so that does have to be answered first. Everything else stems from there. You cannot proceed without that information.
Yeah, and can you have a vault toilet without water to wash your hands? Does the county actually allow that?
You can't. I've seen it. It's just a low flow system into the vault. You just pump it out faster, but it's, it's, it's a big difference. You're in a flood plain. Typically, they don't like vault toilets in a flood plain. And for the obvious reasons. It just gets really different when you start going to a vault versus a.
Yeah, I, I want to put that away, that that's not what we're going to do.
I agree.
And, and if somebody's going to stand up and say, we need water at that spot, and I know there are some, they need to stand up and say it and make the case for it because we have to move on.
Amending the EIR sounds like it's not going to be the easiest thing in the world to me. Once you open the EIR, I don't know what other amendments you might want to do with it. But Harry has his hand up.
Harry has his hand up. There's a non-water toilet guy. Harry.
Harry, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I am. I appreciate the opportunity to speak since it was, I think I was the one that suggested or proposed the idea of maybe doing a waterless toilet. This is more of a future oriented type of situation. Obviously, it would appear that there's an infinite amount of water on this planet, but with the changes that are taking place with regard to the environment, how we're treating the environment, the availability of water. So I just made that suggestion because I've gone online, I've investigated this. And there are toilets, waterless toilets out there that are odorless, that are very hygienic. This is a big project of Bill Gates all over the planet. And I just thought it's something that we should reflect upon as, as a possibility. Just because we're, you know, we're moving into uncharted territory as to how we live on this planet, including our impact on the environment. And it just seemed like something to consider. I'm not saying that it's like, that's the only thing that I would think should be out there. I just thought it was an option that we should be thinking about considering these times that we live in. And as I said, there, there are some, I can't give you particular examples. I can only tell you what I read that there are suburban areas in this country where they are incorporating waterless toilets. And this is a concept actually that's been around for a long, long time. It's just becoming more promoted more because of the way things are, especially in areas where people are having less and less water on other continents, but still, we have no idea what's going to be happening here in our, in our community. So that's, that's my thoughts and I hope you don't mind that I, that I interrupted the discussion because the topic came up and since I'm the one that initially I believe brought it up, I thought I'd just make these remarks. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Harry.
I have a question, Harry, before you get off. Since if we pursue this, and there are, I've had experience with waterless toilets in the form of service vault toilets and composting toilets. And pitfalls of both of them. And I've always sort of thought it'd be fun to have a composting toilet in my house if I lived in the far woods and so forth. But it's not, when do we need to satisfy this issue? That it's probably not a good idea or we choose one or the other. Because if we choose a waterless toilet, somebody's going to have comments against that too. So when would we put this issue to bed? When, when, when would you consider we satisfied that requirement?
It seems to me that we're not clear on the laws governing this area. Someone said they didn't know whether we were allowed to have a waterless toilet in a flood plain. I think we needed to settle, get an idea of the regulatory environment in which we're working before we can make any decisions because it may not be up to us. The EIR does say waterless toilets, but it also designates an allocation of water for the restrooms. So the EIR conflicts with itself. But that was made almost, you know, at least 15 years ago and the laws have changed and we don't know what the current laws are.
Well, it, it is possible to have a vault toilet on the flood plain. All you do is make it 10 feet high. Something like that. So
Like a, like.
You want it, you can pursue it. The question is.
Like in Alabama.
Do we satisfy everyone with the issue? But I agree with you. We need to find that out first, but nothing's impossible if you have enough money.
But doesn't that get us to Monty? Monty's kind of the guy that's going to tell us whether the county says what's good and what's bad.
Right. I'd just like to say that let's make sure that's the first thing Monty does is find out what the law is and, and get, get on with the project.
Yeah. Adolf?
Yeah, I, I've read all this, what I could find about Bill Gates, et cetera. And that seemed to me to be kind of futuristic in the sense that what they put out as a design would take some time to work through. The, so I wasn't sure that those things actually really existed. And secondly, the maintenance on that would be kind of interesting also because the solar powered guys have to incinerate. Somebody's got to clean it out. Somebody has to maintain the mechanisms. So anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, the, I looked at the waterless toilets, two of them. They're probably great if you're in a third world country and there's no other options. If you have other options, obviously, you know, we should, from a cost and realistic perspective, we should approach it. When I talked to Steve McMasters and he, he knows and has looked at the EIR, he's been around, we should get to him before, before he retires. All of, a lot of people at the county are retiring in, in, in Groves. And he said that if we make it an energy, a water efficient facility in every way possible, that it would in fact comply with the intent of the EIR and the EIR would not have to be reopened. And there's a difference between the EIR and a plan. And at one time, the EIR actually included a community center which would have had water use. The, the plan moved on from that. So anyway, I, I suggest that somebody, probably an independent person other than myself, and I suggest that Monty would do that, pursue that first. And I, as a member of this commission, I would not, I, I'd go with the, with the majority of, of course. But the logical thing to do, rather than having a citizens committee come up is to find out if we can get it permitted. And then, and then if we, if we can, and how we get it permitted would be the most important thing. And then we can then take input to see if, if it conforms. But I, I'm not the guy to make the question. I'd like to commission Monty to make, to ask that question.
Yeah. Go ahead, Stan.
First of all, I am, I'm thinking about the teachers that have to teach remotely. And you know how everything's breaking up today? Wouldn't that just be wonderful to have to do this all day, all week, all year? With that in mind, I like what Harry said. My feeling is that maybe that toilet can be a waterless toilet, but water to wash your hands. Because I've never been able to figure out how to wash my hands without water, maybe sand. But, you know, if, if we can do a waterless toilet in that flood plain and it is serviceable, I think it's advisable. It's not just can we do it, it's how do we lead? How do we demonstrate what is needed in years to come? And if we have a functioning waterless toilet with an educational plaque next to it, maybe somebody learns something. And so there you go. That's my, my two bits.
Adolf, is your hand raised now?
No, I was just thinking about it. Today, I think that the water toilets in the home are like 1.2 gallons per flushing, somewhere around there. And I guess they've become fairly efficient. And so something like that wouldn't be a whole lot of water, but on the other hand, depends on how it's used. And then secondly, I noticed when I was in Whole Foods, they had waterless urinals, sure. They didn't use water in those. So that's obviously something that can be done.
Yeah, there's all kinds of options. Jim, we need to move this along.
One last, one last thing.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm going to let Harry say something too, quick.
Okay, the plan has a man's and a women's. Aren't we really considering having two stalls? Both of them unisex? I mean that.
Yeah, all of that. That's why I want to pay Monty some money so we can have the discussion in real time. I feel like we're having the same arbitrary things we've discussed before.
Right.
So yes, to all that, we need to find out what we can and cannot do. We've got 20 grand to do it. Somebody make a motion.
I move that we let Monty, first of all, investigate whether we need to have water and, and where the water should be. Should the water be in the toilet or should it just be for hand washing? And that should be the first thing he finds out from the county.
Okay, and, and Carlos is going to work on, with Monty on the scope of that contract, correct?
Yeah, I think before we ask Monty to do any work, you know, we need to have a contract so that we can pay him and he can get reimbursed for whatever work he does. So I think that's the first thing is to work with, you know, our legal counsel and Pam and get that contract going.
Okay.
And Steve, I'd recommend again pointing an ad hoc one within the PROS Commission.
Yes, I've got Jim and Kermit on the probable ad hoc committee if the board allows it. Okay, we don't really need a motion on anything, do we? Because it's really the CCSD Board. I'm just taking our recommendation. Is that correct? Thumbs up. All right, good. Harry, finish this off quickly. Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment to follow up and I want to thank Stan for actually giving me at least one and a half thumbs up on my idea. But one of the things I want to mention with regard to, you know, waterless toilets that turn our poop for want of a better term into compost. It also turns urine into non-potable water. And so the idea, since this is supposed to be a community area, then one of the things that we might consider is a community garden. And honest people is going to say, we're going to use our own poop for compost for a garden? Well, we need to think about doing things differently on this planet. And that's just another suggestion that I'd like to make because once again, it's a possibility. And the idea, like I said, doing a community garden out there at this community park, whether it's plants or vegetables or whatever, but just plants perhaps, and using the compost from the waterless toilet. You know, this is about awakening to a new way, like I say, of being on the planet. Throw that in. And with regard to hand washing, how many of us have gone to a recreational area where all they have is, or here in town, where all they have is a porta potty and then you have that little liquid stuff that you wash, you know, wash your hands with and, and then use a paper towel or sometimes you don't even need that. You just do it and then your hands dry off. That's just another thought that we might be able to utilize as opposed to having water for hand washing. So, okay, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, you know, Harry, as I get older, I appreciate you more and more. Knowledge comes in, in weird ways and I hear what you're saying. I really do. So I appreciate it and I appreciate your, your courage in saying it too, you know? And the other maybe odd thing that I'm hearing is what if we had to do something over at the skate park? Can we do a waterless toilet over there if we? Can we do a waterless toilet over there if we had to some way? You know, so anyway, let's stop that discussion and move on. All right, next topic. Here we go. It's, I'm can't even find my agenda. Are we on the skate park that we're talking about? Hold on, I mean, let's read it here. Discussion, oh, on the projects we've got to present to the board on Thursday. Okay, anybody want to run with that? Julie, are you ready to go? You got a little presentation for us. Here we go.
Well, hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
I don't know if you can see me. Can you see me?
Nope.
Darn it. Haley, is there any way to make that happen?
I can't make that happen for you.
Well, I will just say, if you could see me, I am proudly wearing my Skate Cambria sweatshirt and backdrop for Skate Cambria. I thank you so much for getting us on agenda so that we can bring this project front and center. We've included in the packet, and I know Haley was so kind to be communicating with me on this, you should have very early renderings that are with your minutes and your agenda. Do you have those? Haley, are you able to share?
Yes, just let me know which one you'd like me to share.
Fantastic. Okay, give me just one moment because I'm gonna pull that up. And we're gonna go with the first one. So if you could show them the street view.
There you go.
Outstanding. Okay, so again, this is not, please know, we're not jumping into any finite design concepts. We're trying to at least get a visual in front of you so that we have some talking points. Steve, I don't know where you'd like me to start as to where we are with the skate park, but I'm gonna encourage all of you when you get off this call to go to skatercambria.com. It's a very comprehensive website. It talks about the three different stages of what we're doing right now to help facilitate funding. I know the last we talked with PROS, we were all kind of coming to a conclusion. You can take that one down, Haley. Thank you. We were coming to a conclusion on, or I should say, an agreement on letting the skate park stay in its current location, which by the way, we're absolutely thrilled about because I felt like there was a unanimous decision on that. Is that a fair assessment, Steve?
Yes.
Great. So you will see obviously two banners down there right now. We're down there every Friday from 2:00 to 3:00, sometimes 2:00 to 4:00, rallying with the kids. The group continues to get bigger. We're making sure they always have masks on because we certainly don't want to make that the talking point and not the skate park. Every rally, we have the funds out there now, not just by collecting with our little jar, but we've got it done electronically. We've aligned with Cambria Community Council. They've been fantastic. And they've put us actually up on their website as a direct donate button with the Skate Park Initiative. So donate is coming in electronically, donate is coming in physically. We've also put a board together so that we're letting the kids not just have skin in the game of building the park, but getting them to understand the government of it. And I know already you've seen many of our students come onto these calls advocating for the park, but we wanted to take a step farther. And so Sher and I, there is a full board, president, vice president, treasurer, secretary. It's all on the website. They're learning about a mission, a vision, bylaws. And we've gone to the high school to ask if it's okay if we can consider their time involvement, community service towards their Silver Core graduation requirements. And the answer is yes. So way more than a skate park, the Skate Park Initiative allows the kids to be learning about the government of how their voice works and seeing how that change can happen. So that's kind of a different area of where we've headed with the skate park. Showing you the draft drawing is us getting real and going, I feel like we're at a point, and I say, I feel, I mean Sher and I, where we want to start talking about how to get this hand to shake between CCSD and the Skate Cambria crew, if you will, on what the financials look like. We have some real numbers. And I know the last call, Steve, you kind of threw out there a range and that was on the CCSD call. I've got a professional skate park builder joining the call on Thursday with CCSD. The name of the company is Evergreen. They're out of Portland, Oregon. They've built skate parks all across the United States and they're the real deal. This is all they do. They do all of it. Permits, it's completely turnkey. I'm gonna kind of speak to Monty because I know this is your wheelhouse. Have you heard of Evergreen at all? I just don't know if that name comes to your...
No, I have not heard of them.
I would love for you to jump on their website because as a builder, one, I think it'll be fun, right? This is a whole different space. And two, we've really done our research and homework on trying to bring a real number to you. So that number is very, when I say tentative, $45 a square foot, roughly 6,500 square feet, $300,000 all in. When I say all in, they're giving me that number with construction costs of concrete, fencing, permitting, architectural design, all in. Now, are we gonna have complications? Of course. Are there things we don't know? Absolutely. I'm just trying to get us something that's real so we have, you know, the ability to move forward. And quite frankly, the call on Thursday with CCSD, I mean, Sher and I and the kids, we can do so much and we can certainly move public funds, but we need to understand their fiscal responsibility and how this hand is going to, again, shake to get this project to not just be a conversation, to start moving dirt. I have no intention, and I say this very kindly to all of you, to be talking about the skate park two years from now. These kids need a park and the ability to build it is not ridiculously expensive. I mean, does anybody here feel like $300,000 is a huge number? Thank you, Kermit. So I'm open to answer any questions I am gonna ask. Haley, if you don't mind, and Joyce, I'll get right to you. Do you mind pulling up update number one? Are you there? There. Okay, so again, just kind of an area view. We've, you know, asked Billy to put in some green space. I've been speaking with Claudia Harmon in regards to Beautify Cambria, wonderful supporter and partner. Again, bringing in more partners, I can tell you right now, no problem bringing in more partners. Just, you know, it's the question of, thank you, you can take that one down, Haley. It's the question of the finances, right? Because I mean, we, we're not afraid to raise public funds. We've got public awareness. They love this project. We have, I mean, are there naysayers? Always. That's all they do. Sometimes I think some people just live to be negative. We can't help them all, but I can tell you that the ones that are coming to see us on Friday, it's amazing feedback, guys, and they're looking for this space to be a lovely community space. I'm sorry, Joyce, you had your hand up. I apologize. What was your question?
Would you state the name of your website again, please?
My pleasure. It is skatercambria.com.
Oh, okay. And also the fellow that you quoted.
Evergreen. Evergreen is E-V-E-R, green, like our grass is green.
Yeah, right. Got it.
And they're out of Portland, Oregon. And by coincidence, this is kind of funny, but Aaron Lynn happened to be traveling on vacation and he posted at the coolest bike and skate park. And he posted a picture which happened to be in Frisco, Colorado, which is an Evergreen skate park. So he's been there firsthand to see one of their projects. And we all know Aaron's got his hand in many things in this.
Thanks so much.
My pleasure, Joyce. Any other questions?
Just one thing, Julie, did you go all the way to the library in that 55-inch square foot? Or does that include the parking? Or is that, you just stayed in the footprint of sort of the slab that we have?
Exceptionally good question, Kermit. So that 6,500 square feet is basically the footprint. I would love to take on more of the parking lot. I just don't know from an architectural standpoint what we're going to be allowed to do left to right. I certainly know we don't want to go back because of that hillside, right? So the minute we start cutting into a hillside, you've got, I don't know, I mean, who knows? But integrity issues, what does that open up?
Well, you, you will have to sort of go into the hillside a little bit just to get drainage around the park, rather drain across it because that whole hillside drains. So you'll, you'll have to raise an elevation back in there, a little bit of retaining wall to direct the flow around you.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Kermit. I, I mean, obviously, this is not, construction's not my wheelhouse, so that would be something that could be easily flushed out with somebody like Billy. I just want the most space we can get, so I'm with you 100%. Shoot, I'd cut the whole hill down if I could, you know? But I think right now to discuss also cost, so that as we increase the size, we increase the cost. So I think right now, the fair part of that too is to say, if we look at just we have, all we're asking for is what we have, right? I mean, if it could get better, great, but just looking at what we have is 6,500 square feet of working space. So being on the call today is a couple of things. One, I thought the renderings, visuals are wonderful just to be able to step back and go, oh, I see it. Like I actually see it. I can see it in this space. The second is to get real with the financials and go, okay, what does that look like? Does it mean public funds? Some private, you know, public funds, maybe some grants and CCSD? I don't know. That's why we're, we're at a point where I feel like everybody is saying, we want a skate park. I hear, I feel like that's where we're at. Now, the next question is, how do we finance it? And again, we're not afraid to step up. I've already talked to Steve about a fundraiser for the 31st on Halloween because so much has, you know, gone down with Halloween, with COVID. The kids are, there's not gonna be a whole lot happening for them. So we thought of doing a fundraising pancake platter. What is it? Pancake plate so you can skate, which will be a drive-through pancake breakfast? We've gotten everything donated, 100%, all the food, everything, done. 100% profit. And I'm just waiting on Steve to clear that to see if we can use the kitchen over there. So again, I feel like we've got great community awareness and support. We just need to know what you guys are thinking as far as going to CCSD on how we fund it.
Boom, there we go.
Boom, drop the mic. Thanks.
Yeah, right. It's all about the money. Has anyone got a comment on that?
Well, I just, a question. Do you have, are you looking anywhere for grants, Julie, or other places? I don't know how many sources of grants.
So Kermit, if I may interject on that, I'm gonna say yes, but the problem with them getting grants is they need a firm commitment from us in the CCSD that this is a legitimate project. Julie, would you agree with that?
Yes, I want to also add to that, Steve, if you don't mind, Kermit. We have applied for one grant. It's a small grant with CC, Skate Cambria Community Council, which is kind of interesting because it is also the partner who has stepped up to help be our 501(c)(3). We obviously are not a 501(c)(3). We didn't set out to want to be, I'll be honest. We're, you know, two moms and business owners in this community that want the space back and want the kids to have a voice. So to go down the road of a 501(c)(3) also is part of our problem, Kermit. We can't just jump into, like I reached out to the Tony Hawk Foundation. They have a project called Skate Project. Wonderful grant opportunity, up to $25,000, but they won't even talk to you until you have money in the bank and you're certified 501(c)(3). So there's some challenges in just being able to apply for grants. And we know this, you know, as PROS knows this, as they're applying for grants. So the small grant is for like $3,000 and I don't know how much of that we will get.
Two, two things then. One for Steve. You were talking about a 501 or 503, 1(c), whatever. 501(c)(3), C, that for a foundation. Is this a good time to sort of start that so you'd have the ability to do this and control the state? Or apply for funds for the skate park? At least you'd have a backbone for foundations for other outfits coming along later in other sources to do this, same type of thing. And second one, it looks like there's two projects that probably should be looked at. One is the skate park, as you have talked about on the footprint of the valid one. The other one is going all the way from the edge of the, the north edge to the library because that space should be looked at rather than just an open wound waiting for someone else to come and fill it up with something. We either need to put parking there or possibly extend, expand the skate park.
Well, Kirk, that's just, I, my concern is, I don't know what we're going to be required to have for bathroom facilities, like when you were mentioning potentially in waterless bathroom facilities and parking. I don't know what's gonna be required on this project. That's gonna be something that needs to come from the county. So we may lose some of that area because of required parking.
I think we, it should be required for parking, but it should be incorporated in the design. And I think the bathroom issues, we talked about it and that's a good one. We need to be cognizant of it because I was assuming that we'd, they'd use the one across the street at the...
So Kermit, I'm speaking on the ground, I'm gonna throw out one other idea. And I love Steve that you backed Harry saying, no idea is, you know, a crazy idea. You've just gotta, no pun intended, flush it out and put it out there. So I, I've reached out to Tesla and I just would like to know your feedback on what you think about potentially putting a couple Tesla stations on this property.
So I was involved in some of those discussions with the Chamber of Commerce when they were going through it. And it, it seemed more complicated than it appears. But by the same token, that was two or three years ago and things may have changed. And, you know, I don't know if Tesla is the only charging station, but yeah, having some type of, you know, while we had those bike, you know, that bike thing was there. That was kind of a, a good concept that was before its time. But yeah, utilizing that whole space, I think, is important, Kermit.
Well, my, Steve, my thought on that is also being able to make this a carbon, when I say make this, put some type of green project on the skate park. So there is, and the thing with Tesla, and again, I've reached out to them. I'm hoping to have a conversation with them Friday. And that is they'll also take on some of the costs, right? That's the key, is potentially bringing some money to the table and our ability to be able to then say that it's an environmental project that, you know, we're looking at the larger good of the earth as Harry has brought to our conversation today. So it's very early. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there and see what the general feel was on something like charging stations, two charging stations. Because there's not, if you own a Tesla in Cambria, it's an interesting quandary when you start driving. There, there isn't a whole lot between Big Sur and San Luis in charging stations. So just a thought, but Kermit, back to fundraising. I, we are absolutely committed to this project. I mean, obviously, you see Sher and I out there with the kids. We're open to doing fundraising. However, I'm, I'm not the cupcake mom. I'm not the mom that's like, let's sell cupcakes. I, that takes, it, it's horrible and that's not me, okay? This is, this is not a big money project and it can be done very quickly if we just get these funds decided on and where they're coming from. And somebody like Evergreen can build this park out in four to six months.
Boom. All right, so in a perfect world, we would go to the board on Thursday and they would say, oh, here's some money. Is that the perfect world?
Yeah, the perfect world, Steve, would be for us to get a deposit and get Evergreen building. That would be the perfect world because I mean, they're gonna need to go through, you know, the county process. And again, is Evergreen our builder? Well, I sure like their cost and I mean, I, I've put some time and energy into this, Steve. I, again, I'm not in Monty's space, but concrete costs money. And I felt like that was a pretty fair, and I've also spoken to Rich DeBalla, who did the pickleball project, right? And that's a lot of concrete and fencing. And that was a private project for one reason, to keep it private. He did a 501(c)(3) to stay away from prevailing wage, got it? And he spent close to $200,000 on that project. Is anybody familiar with the pickleball court project? Okay, so is that a fair assessment, what I just said with Rich's project?
Yeah, as far as I understand it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And I point out that if you are working with public funds, even if you're a private organization, you have to pay prevailing wage even if you're a nonprofit. So being a nonprofit doesn't exempt you from prevailing wage.
He said differently, Haley. I believe you. I'm just saying that his conversation was that's the reason why he did the 501(c)(3). Huh. Interesting. I will look into that.
That doesn't deter our direction.
Doesn't. But Emily, thank you for the feedback on that, because that, that was the reason why he took the step of the 501(c)(3). And again, we're not, honestly, we're not interested in doing that. I, the foundation idea is a wonderful idea, because that could be not just, again, where is Pro's going for the future? This could be the launch of that foundation for facilitating those funds through Pro's and its future maintenance. That's a really good idea.
Monty?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. What I have understood in the past on prevailing wage is, it depends where the money comes from. Is it public or private money? Not necessarily who is spending it or, or what the entity is.
That's the way I understood it, Monty. So in other words, it was all private funds, all of it. And because of it being private funds, they didn't have to get multiple bids and pay prevailing wage. Would that be a correct statement?
That sounds correct to me, but CCSD, if CCSD provides the money.
Oh, yeah, we're done. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would you prefer the CCSD not to provide any funds then?
I don't, Steve, it doesn't matter to me. I just, again, it, the price, it's just an issue of the price, right?
Yeah.
And so, again, that Billy's gonna be on the call, the owner of Evergreen. I brought him straight to the table, so that we didn't lose time with that either, with CCSD and some of their members crying, in my opinion, kicking it down the line. We can answer those direct questions right now. So he'll be there, and that would be a really great conversation starter, you know, is, what does that look like if these funds are coming from CCSD? Is that proposal-wise?
Yeah, well, it would certainly seem like the CCSD would be very much into the project if they didn't have to commit funds to it. Right? If they just said, hey, all we gotta do is kick in the land and be responsible for it. It would be easier for them to be on board 100% as a board.
Yeah, well, that's a great thought. I did have one board member come to me and say, well, what if we leased you the land for a dollar a year for the next 20 years, and you handle the rest? And I'm like, yeah, no, that doesn't sound like a, a fair shake. You know, and Steve, I feel like it was there, right? And it was, and so there's, there's fiscal responsibility in that.
Yeah, I was just actually referring more to prevailing wage, that if they kicked in 150 grand, let's say half the project cost, we would have to go to prevailing wage.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be, again, a question for Billy and understanding where the funds are coming from and how that prices the project.
Interesting.
Any other questions in regards to what we're doing, how we're doing it? More importantly, how we're delivering the message to the public?
Any questions? I'll comment. I like, I like the look. I wish that thing was there. That would make me happy as a Cambrian.
Sure. Thank you. And Monty?
Yeah, I've been, I haven't been involved, obviously, in any of this discussion you guys have been having about the skate park. Just something popped in my mind as you were talking, and I just wanted to throw it out there, because I've, I've had on several of my hotel projects, I almost put in a car stacker. I just wanted to throw it out for you guys to think about. I know it's a really tight space, and there are parking requirements for, for every type of use, and again, I don't know. Did you, did I lose you guys again?
No, we're just lost on the car stacker. We're like, yeah!
So, a car stacker, you pull, there's several different options, but you pull in, and one of the simplest option is, is just a long bay where there's a row parking on the bottom. You pull in, and it'll lift you up, and then you can park underneath it. That probably wouldn't work for you guys, and then the next one that would work is like a puzzle stacker. So you pull in, you park here, and it might take your car up here, and then you call it back. I know it's getting a little bit out there. I just wanted to throw it out, because I know I've gone down to Farmer's Market, and the parking is in high demand in that location. So it may not get a full amount of use, but it would be an interesting thing to consider. That's, that's all I'll say.
Yeah, right there next to the waterless toilet. It'll be awesome.
All right, so I also want to add that we've got 1,600 signatures right now. We've raised $2,000 just being out in front of our little rallies on Fridays. In addition to that, we've started a merchandise line. We've already sold out completely on the first order, and we're on a second order of merchandise. The merchandise link goes on the website this week. And here's the best part, all our merchandise is being done by our local high school's press shop, so it's students helping students. Van Harstel and his team are handling all of our, our press work for our shirts or hats, and they're making money for the school and for their pathway, and of course, we're making the difference for Skate Cambria.
Awesome. All right, I'm gonna let, I see Sher's got her hand up. Can we get to her?
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I want to apologize. I'm at work today, so I'm a little in and out of the meeting. I just wanted it to show on the minutes that I was here with Julie, and I appreciate her speaking up for us today on our behalf, and we thank you guys for your time and attention. Cyrus also wanted to be here, but he's in the middle of class again, so this is a hard time for him. But I just wanted to show up on the minutes that we were here, and appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Right on. Thank you, Sher, for hanging out so long. Sorry it took so much time. All right, anybody else?
Hey, Steve, just wanted to add one, one more thing. Maybe just an additional tool for the Pro's Commission to think about as you guys are helping out with, and making decisions for the skate park. So, in the current budget, the board allocated some funds to assist with this project, the skate park project. There's $17,000 allocated to help in this effort, along with $3,000 that was allocated to hire a grant writer. So there's a couple of tools to be able to use to help, like I said, with this project.
Okay, there we go. Julie, we'll put that into the bag and think about that over the next couple of days.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And Carlos, thank you for jumping in and giving us a little bit more information. I'm sure that Thursday will be fluid on conversation in regards to the skate park. We're thrilled, like you said earlier, in regards to just kind of having a unanimous understanding of moving the project forward. We're excited to work with CCSD. I, I really do hope that you feel that Sher and I and all of Skate Cambria, again, is putting this into a very positive light, both for CCSD and Pro's from a public standpoint. We have a lot of conversations with individuals in this community, and the number one question is, why was it ripped out? So we have done our best to make sure that we are answering that, not going back in the past, but moving us forward. And again, as Sher stated, thank you for your time. We're committed. Let's get the skate park done.
Would, would it be of value for that $20,000 we spend on design, Julie?
We could save all that, Kermit. The 20,000 is, I mean, somebody like Evergreen isn't gonna need to go out. I mean, like I said, this is all they do. They build skate parks. So their designer's already been generous to give me four different renderings at no cost. Now, the money facilitated for a grant writer, that's a whole different ballgame. You know, I mean, grant writing is a talent. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, but they, even so, you still, they've designed conceptual design. It's not a, a real plan, in the sense of you're not gonna build it from that conceptual.
Of course. No, they're gonna need to finite that, for sure.
Would it make sense to, at least by the conceptual plan of whatever it is, but finalize the boundaries of it in the sense of parking, all the questions? We have a hard plan that has all the answers theoretically. It's just, it can be built from that, that point. Would that be a val, it'd be a value in fundraising, because you know what you have exactly, because, you know, they could. Because if we enlarge the space, it will take more money. They might need a phase one or two. But the important part is, there is a que, a question about parking, how far it goes, how the edges work, how the water drains. So it, it, design plan doesn't hurt to be finalized upfront. You know, a survey has to be taken of the topo and edges and where everything's going and boundaries, because there are some land, there is private land behind that library. And so everything falls more into place as to what is feasible, and there's less. What, whoa, didn't expect that one coming at you. So that's my point. If we've got 20,000, would we be better off putting a design, you know, site plan together so that we know exactly what it is we've got that we're, we're doing instead of a conceptual plan?
That, see, that seems to make sense to me, because Julie, did we ever get any finite information on the, the lot number over there, or how that thing lies with the county?
Yeah, so, you know, I pulled the flat map on it, and it's an interesting piece of land. That's what I'm gonna start with on that. Carlos could probably pull in on this APN a little bit better, but what's interesting is it doesn't even look like it's been, I don't want to say it's not on county record. It's on county record, but it doesn't look like it's ever been properly marked. And it almost looks like it belongs to the vets hall across the street. So Carlos, you're gonna need to enlighten us a little on this plaque, because, I mean, I did 10 years in Tylanescro, and when I looked at this county flat map, I was very confused, because by county record, it doesn't look like it's been marked.
And so, if we, would it make sense to use some of that $20,000, like Kermit said, to get those answers before we started spending money on the design of the project? Is that what you're saying, Kermit?
Yeah, it, just, it's all those questions. Once you start, you know, surveying and getting your boundaries and checking the, the topo and for the drainage, what kind of water is coming down at you, you really are kind of guessing, whistling in the, you know, in the dark there. And having a site plan that's, you know, has actual boundaries, actual topo information, and, and you can see where you have to grade, how, how much dirt you would be moving around, those do make a difference.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, Kermit. Taking some of it and getting a surveyor in there to, you know, properly. Again, I think this is a CCSD responsibility. I don't think it should be cutting into, I mean, last thing we want to do is take $20,000 and hand it to somebody to mark four corners and tell us there's drainage issues. I mean, that money can sieve out really fast, and that is directly a CCSD question and something, and I think personally, they should be responsible to pay for.
And Carlos, let me see if I get this budgetary issues right. We were, is there $20,000 approximately for the restroom design? And $20,000 to work with skate park issues in our budget? And then there's the $20,000 grant we got from the county, or no?
Well, the answer to that is, the board allocated, yes, about $20,000, 17 for the skate park project, along with $3,000 for the grant writer. You know, it could be more, it could be less. You could divvy up, you know, four, $5,000, and then cut back on the 17. That's up to Pro's to decide. But, so we have that, and then the $20,000 for the design of the restroom came from the county. So right now, right now, Pro's has basically $40,000 to work with, 20 for the design of the restroom, and then about 20 for the skate park.
All right, any other questions, Julie?
I heard, Carlos, did I hear 43,000 or 40? I just want to make sure clear for the minutes.
So it's about 40, 40,000, but 20,000 is from the county, and that's already been allocated to the design of the restroom.
That's the bathroom money.
Understood.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, well, can we make a motion for that money to be spent on a survey of the plot, the flat between the existing space all the way to the edge of the library?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a second on that. Anybody want to second that?
I couldn't hear what he said. What did he say? Somebody else to repeat it, because I can't hear Kermit at all.
He, he wants to take part of that $20,000 that we have in our budget for the skate park and get a survey done to actually see what we've got going over there.
Okay, thank you.
Hand ownership and ready.
Do we have a second on that? And then we'll have discussion if we have a second.
I have a question for Carlos.
All right, hold on, Adolf. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? All right, no second on that. Let's go to discussion. Go ahead, Adolf.
Yeah, Carlos sent me kind of a site plan not too long ago. It was plot number 72, I think it was. All right, Carlos, it's closer.
Yeah, so I think it was a few weeks back, Adolf had sent me an email asking about the APN number there and what property we owned, and I sent him the map of that lot. It's a separate lot from Vets Hall. Visually, if you look at the lot, it goes from the edge of the library. It extends out past the current layout of the skate park. I'd say about 100 feet past that. It's about where the Jocelyn Center is, the middle of the Jocelyn Center. And then it actually goes up the hill to the back of the neighbors' fences, all the way to the back. I'm pretty familiar with, with the lot. I think the only question is, you know, the boundary. What is that, east side of, of that lot? I think that's really the only, the only unknown there.
Right. And, and then also, just wondering, how wide is a parking spot?
Well, isn't that kind of what we're doing with that money, is, and that's what we were doing with the money, is we were tearing out the old skate park, and we were deciding what to do. And we got a little distracted with the soccer thing, which we would have, if, even if we went with the soccer thing, we would have had to spend the money on the same thing, right? Figuring out where the lot lines are, figuring out what the drainage is. We kind of need to do that regardless. Is that true? Jim, say something important.
Yeah, I would agree with spending money to basically lay out that lot, see what we're actually working with.
Yeah, and what the county says. That sounds like another job for Monty. So, let's, I'm, I don't, I want to second Kermit's motion. I don't know if I'm allowed to as the president, but I, I think, and even if we second it, it's really just a recommendation that we would take to the board on Thursday saying, hey, we got some money in the coffers. We need to figure out what we got going on over there. Joyce?
I'm checking on it.
Joyce is gonna put a second on it? Anybody else want to talk? All right, I've got a motion and a second to spend some of that money that we've got on figuring out what's going on across the street. All in favor, say aye.
Can I make a comment on that?
Go ahead, Jim.
It shouldn't come out of the skate park money.
No, but isn't that part of the money we've already got budgeted for the skate park?
That would be fine.
Yeah, it's, we're not making them pay for it. This is, this is our stuff we gotta do, which we were gonna have to do anyway, because the county wanted to know why the skate park was there in the first place, which we didn't have an answer for.
Right.
Yeah. There you go. Okay. All right, so I'm taking, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
All right, I'm taking that to the board on Thursday, too. Do we have anything else? Awesome. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. Thanks for everybody's time. Monty, you're a champ. Thank you for hanging out.
Thank you guys for having me. If you want any help getting the topo or any drainage issues worked out on the skate park, I'd be happy to work on that.
Julie, that's my friend, Monty. Talk to him. He's a good guy.
Monty, can you hear me?
Yes.
Will you do me a favor? Jump on that website when you can. All of our information is on the Contact Us page. If you wouldn't mind shooting me a quick email, I'd love to connect with you. And so, the other thing is, Steve, on that motion that just passed, thank you very much, Jim, for clarifying it doesn't come out of the skate park funds. So, is it the recommendation of this board to work with Monty on getting him a price to, you know, so he can come back to you with some type of a proposal on cost, because I don't want to lose a month on trying to get somebody out there to do a job that can be done in one day.
Okay, Julie is now holding our feet to the fire, what was that that I just heard, Kermit?
Monty, can you get them a bid on a cost within the next day or two, on what your time's been worth in regards to getting out there and getting information, so that we can make it to the next CCSD board meeting for November?
I can get your proposal, I would hire a surveyor, and I just have to look into it to see if a record of survey would be required for the boundary, or not, or if we could do a record boundary, which, that affects the price. As far as drainage goes, that work would be done after the topographic and boundary information was, was completed. So yes, I can get your proposal, probably in a couple of days, to get that work started.
That would be an electronic site plan?
Yes.
Electronic site plan?
Yes.
Alright, are we comfortable with that? Okay, then, then that will be the recommendation that we want to spend the money with Monty when he, after he gets us a proposal.
See, Monty, you just got a second job, like that, boom, twice boom, Steve.
Yeah, I was gonna dismiss you earlier too, I guess it's good you hung around.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Alright, I'm going to the board on Thursday, as many of you are there, it'd be appreciative. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.